We're going to go ahead and start. Okay, welcome everyone. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
I am here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next we'll have the invocation by Alex Soller from the Vertical Encounter Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Soller.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly and gracious Father, God, we first off just thank you for this day, God. Thank you for the simple things, God like the weather and the breath in our lungs, Father, the fact that we can get here alive, Father is a blessing. Father, in this room, there is a great diversity represented, Father, a diversity that you created, Father. Different skin tones, different traditions, cultures, backgrounds, ways of thinking, Father, this diversity, God, that you have created. We are made in your image. You are a creative God. But Father, I pray to the Lord, God, that we use this diversity for multiplication, God, and not division. God, that we can partner together, Father. We have different ways of doing the same thing, Father. I believe that everyone here wants the same thing, God, but we have different avenues to get there. So, God, I pray for wisdom tonight. I pray for peace among our city, Lord God. We pray for peace in Waukegan. Father, in our families, within our students, in our minds, in our hearts, God. Father, within every resident, every department represented in our city. God, tonight, we pray that you have your way, God, that you be here, Father, that you be part of the conversations, Father. God, as we hold each other accountable, God, these conversations aren't easy, but Father, I pray, Lord God, that it be productive and fruitful. God, we love you and we thank you. And I pray this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your broadening for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First, I want to welcome everybody to our May 2nd Council meeting. And whether you're watching us from home or you're here tonight, welcome, everyone. I'm actually really happy that we have a full house tonight. In these meetings, we do the work of the people and our residents and our businesses. So, I'm really happy that we get a turnout, that people come in and enjoy and invest in our community like they should be. It's hard to believe, but on Wednesday, I will have been mayor for one year. The time has whizzed by. It's also been very slow. There's been a lot of work. I'm grateful to all of the residents for giving me this opportunity. It's really been an honor and I absolutely love what I get the privilege of doing, and I want to thank everybody for that. The work is a lot, and as part of that, I want to just tell you some of the things we've done so far. We've passed two balanced budgets without tax increases.
That's my kind of language right there. I love that. Thank you, Mayor.
We revamped staffing at City Hall to better serve our community and are continuing to do so. We've reinstated community policing. We've collaborated on green efforts to beautify our city. Many of you are starting to see that we're doing more code enforcement, making sure that our properties are cleaned up, and that our city has pride. And people look at us and say, this is where I want to live. This is where I want to invest. American Place was here this evening, is bringing a new destination casino to Waukegan. Thank you for that. And we're actively working to revitalize our downtown and lakefront. And there's a lot that has to go into that, so it's a little slower than I would like, but we are working on things to improve both those areas. And those are just the first year goals. I can't wait to bring on year two. Now, this evening, we have an important opportunity in front of us. Waukegan has, we say, 90,000 residents, but we know we actually represent closer to 125,000 residents. We have hundreds of businesses, 514 city staff members, and over a $200 million budget, and a half billion dollars of economic development actively happening. But we lack a professional city administrator. The position of city administrator will quickly pay for itself by building out efficiencies in government and in grant seeking. A city administrator will help Waukegan position itself as a city of choice for employers and residents. Honestly, this is a game changer, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity right now to do this. I ran my campaign on this issue, and the voters spoke. Other municipalities and smaller adopted city administrators long ago, and it's long past due for us to do the same. A city administrator is an investment in Waukegan to improve the lives of our residents, our business climate, and keep us competitive as we attract new residents and economic activity. I'm going to use a British expression. Ladies and gentlemen, we can't afford to be a pound wise and a pound foolish. In addition, we plan to take this issue to a referendum in the upcoming spring of 2023 elections to make the city administrator a permanent part of our city's government. Voters have already supported hiring a city administrator in my election, and I am confident they will support this referendum too. I know voters are watching this meeting this evening to see how their city council members will vote on this important issue. We must get this process moving and moving quickly, and that is why, in addition to having a referendum, we're moving this process through the city ordinance. I am fully aware that there might be some necessary tweaks and changes along the way, but the path that residents want and need and the path to equality, prosperity throughout our nine wards is so essential. I just want to say that before I start the meeting. Next, I want to go on with something exciting that happened in our community. I think you all were part of Earth Week. This community came together. But before I go into all the things that happened during Earth Week, I want to do a Waukegan Proud Award. For a gentleman, would you like to come up, Mr. Wozniak?
Wozniak.
Come on, let's go. Don't be shy. Before we read this and I present this to you, I just want to say, this gentleman came to the city and said, "Look, we do the Amshells cleanup all the time. I want to go out and make this a bigger project. I want to work at cleaning up our entire community." So, he had a meeting with our aldermen, and Alderman Florian and Alderman Rivera were two that took off with this right off the bat, but all of our aldermen were on board and participated with this. And it was a tremendous success. What Earth Week did for us was, we know we all do these dumpster cleanups in our wards, and generally, it's one ward at a time that we do. We did it where it was every day for a week. The amount of stuff that we got was incredible. You guys all cleaned your homes out really, really well, and I can't be more proud of that. But in addition to that, these were the groups that came out and supported. We had Waukegan Main Street, obviously Marty Wozniak, Waukegan Garden Club, Waukegan Port Authority, Waukegan Township, Waukegan Park District, Waukegan School District, the Yacht Club, Junior Sale Program, and AAUW preschool, as well as our Police, Fire, and Public Works Department. In addition, Waukegan High School environmental science classes and John R. Lewis Middle School Gap STEM program had their own Earth Week activities. So, the Earth Week celebration extended to the end of the month. And thank you to all of the volunteers that did this. This is amazing. Like I said, we had dumpsters in the wards from 8:00 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. The amount of electronics, just household items that we took in. I think every ward had two dumpsters, and there were some days we could have used three. But this gentleman is behind it, and this is what I'm talking about because, you know, we all work together, but it's the community that makes our city work. And this one person, when you ask yourself, what can one person do? This is it. So, thank you, and please give a great time. Marty, go on.
Not yet.
Marty, Marty.
Hold on, Marty.
We're going to read this to you, and then I'm going to come down and present it to you.
Waukegan City of Progress does hereby present Marty Wozniak this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your support for Waukegan's Earth Week 2022, along with your ongoing Amstutz cleanups and community engagement efforts presented on May 2nd, 2022.
Hello, Margaret.
Some more announcements, just general announcements of things going on in the city. April 30th was the National Drug Takeback Day. Many of you came and turned in things. There will also be another day in June that Alderman Kirkwood is sponsoring, which Red Day. You can also turn it in there too. The Police Department does have a drug collection box available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at door number five on West Street. And you can do your medications that you're not using. I think you can even do pet medications on that. Our Planning and Zoning Department, in conjunction with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or we call it CMAP, is hosting a community workshop to update our zoning regulations on Thursday, May 12th, from 6:00 to 7:30 here in Council Chambers. There'll be a short presentation, breakout sessions, and even children's activities. Get involved and help share what you think the community's future should be. May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. Asian American and Pacific Islanders have contributed significantly to many facets of American culture and society, including science and medicine, literature and arts, sports and recreation, government and politics, and activism in law. And of course, in 2021, Camilla Harris became our first Asian American Vice President of the United States, and Waukegan is home to a growing AAPI population. And we take this month to recognize them and honor their communities. And we specifically have a fairer population in the ninth ward. So, that's great. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. This is important. As many of you know, as part of the pandemic, we have suffered greatly in our country with mental health issues. So, please, help fight the stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies that help change mental health policies. The city is looking for youth employment and internship opportunities for the summer for ages 16 to 22-year-olds. These opportunities and all open positions in the city are listed on the jobs page of our website. And last but not least, the Spring Greek Food Fest is going on from Friday, May 13th through Sunday, May 16th. There are posters downstairs in the lobby, and we have some in the back for you. Please take advantage of it. They always have great food. Don't miss it. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're going on to resolutions, proclamations, and we do have three tonight. The first will be a proclamation for World Migratory Bird Day, whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our community, and whereas Waukegan is part of an important migratory bird route with bird stops at its lakefront, parks, ravines, rivers, homes, and adjacent Lake County Forests preserves, and whereas many citizens welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic hobbages of spring. And whereas these migrants by species also play an important economic role in our community by attracting birders to visit from outside Waukegan while also controlling insect pests. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations in Waukegan, Lake County, and throughout the country. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and the wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern United States. And whereas light pollution attracts and disorientates nocturnally migrating birds, making them more likely to land in areas where they are more vulnerable to collisions and other dangers. Therefore, individuals, communities, and governments are encouraged to go lights-out, dimming the lights at night. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people observe World Migratory Bird Day as a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and support migratory bird conservation as a call to action. And whereas while World Migratory Bird Day officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 14th, 2022, as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Waukegan, an official bird city, Illinois, and urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Lake County Alderman Society, adopted the second day of May, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next proclamation is May is Waukegan Bike Month.
Proclamation, May is Bike Month in Waukegan, whereas the bicycle is an whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Waukegan scenic beauty. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Waukegan are encouraged to experience the joys of bicycling by biking to work and to community events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Waukegan, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas promoting bicycle tourism year-round can attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, retail establishments, parks, as well as our arts and cultural destinations. And whereas bicycles are the means, primary means of transportation to and from work and school for many Waukegansites. And whereas generating greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education can help reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And whereas, the following tips will help riders enjoy biking more. Have your bike checked over by a qualified bicycling shop. Always wear a helmet to protect your head in the event of a crash. Ride in the rightmost lane that goes in the direction that you are traveling. Obey all stop signs, traffic lights, and lane markings. Look before you change lanes or signal a turn. Indicate your intention and then act. Be visible and predictable at all times. Wear bright clothing and signal turns. Whereas, May is National Bike Month, established in 1956 to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and celebrate the unique power of the bicycle and the many reasons to ride. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim May, 2022, as Bike Month in Waukegan, and urge all residents to join in this special observance adopted the second day of May, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our third proclamation is to honor Municipal Clerks Week. And who better to do the reading than you?
That would be me. That would be me. All right. Proclamation, 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through May 7th, 2022. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education, programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Janet E. Kilkelly and Deputy City Clerk David A. Patterson, and to all the professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, presented at the City Council meeting on the second day of May, 2022. And David, please stand. Thank you very much. Now, we're on to audience time.
Actually, before we start audience time, I have one quick thing. I don't think there were any questions for the living room from Independent Center, but I just wanted to introduce. Can you stand up? Oh, there were questions. Never mind. We're going to have you stay. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Audience time.
Okay. We have three minutes. We have three minutes, and I have the timer back, so hopefully that works tonight. My first person up, there's a number of people, so we are going to call you in groups of five. If you would stand up, go over to the east side of the room and wait your turn. And the first one will be Marty Wozniak. Marty Wozniak, Jack Die, Kathy Charity, Andrea Moore, and Diane Verratti. And that's Marty Wozniak, Jack Die, Kathy Charity, and Andrea Moore, and Diane Verratti. Mr. Marty, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Mayor, and the City Council. Wasn't expecting the big to do earlier, and unfortunately, what I have here is kind of a redundant to what the mayor provided earlier. But I'm going to read it anyway because I wrote it. Thank you for the opportunity to summarize our Earth Week activities, and thanks to many people who made this a success as our inaugural event. To thank everyone involved would unfortunately consume my entire lot of time. However, I must bring attention to several people who truly went above and beyond any expectations we had. First, the aldermen who provide not only moral and physical support, but financial as well. My alderman, Felix Rivera, Eighth Ward Alderman Lynn Florian, Ninth Ward Alderman Thomas Hayes, Fifth Ward Alderman Eas Newsom, and Sixth Ward Alderman Keith Turner. Thank you so much. Additionally, this event would not have even been possible without the diligent efforts in getting the word out to the various media outlets that support ideas and knowledge of the community. David Motley and Jane Ferry. This is not to slight any of the efforts put forth by any of the other organizations involved. Without the total community effort that was exhibited, the results would not have been so astounding. And these are the city of Waukegan, the Waukegan Park District, the Waukegan Port District, the Waukegan Township, Friends of the Waukegan Beach, Main Street, the Youth Conservation Corps, Waukegan Community Unit School District 60, and, well, my company. These organizations and over 200 volunteers, which provided the manpower to do this initial cleanup. And what did they accomplish? Collected over 31,000 pounds of debris in the wards, in the dumpsters, and trucks when the dumpsters were actually overflowing. Additionally, 11 one-ton trucks were filled with recycling materials. Hundreds of bags of garbage collected from throughout the sea. These are tremendous results for participation and collection. However, it is also sad that we had to put forth this effort throughout our city. I am sure each person involved will appreciate any efforts to curb this level of littering by any means possible, especially with the technology that is available today. It is my hope that the momentum generated in this event will continue throughout the year. As Main Street and my company are in their 10th year of cleaning the Amstutz, and have three more cleanups planned. The Park District is also planning additional cleanups throughout the sea and each ward in the parks. We hope that this will continue the momentum generated by Earth Week, and that additional positive feedback and positive press that we receive from both the New Sun and the Tribune will continue with many other projects that we can do in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wozniak. I gave you a couple extra minutes or an extra minute because 46 seconds because we didn't let you talk before. So, it's good. All right. So, let me get set up. Okay, Mr. Jack Die.
All right, thank you. I'm here to advocate for a city administrator position. This year's tax bill, I just looked up online. I haven't got the little Ah, that was a fast three minutes.
Fastest three minutes ever.
I was a
I go the other way. I'm sorry.
All right. This is the first year in a long time that I've had a flat tax bill, and I really do appreciate that. This position is built into the balanced budget, which will not raise our taxes again next year, well, for spending this year. And it's allocated for it, so that seems to me like a win-win. We've accounted for it financially, which is my biggest complaint. If you guys all know me, you've heard me talk a lot about finance. I really care about spending our dollars wisely. So, I came with a couple of things I want to talk about as far as pros and cons. I've heard, maybe I've missed some. I've heard, maybe I've missed some things, but just what I've heard. Some of the cons, you know, we could spend some of this money on police. And that's a very valid point. Police officers are short in this city. I'd love to see more. We have rampant crime in a lot of areas. I would love to see change. Unfortunately, with the budget passed, the headcount number is static, so that position, you're not gonna get a 250 or whatever thousand dollar police officer, you're gonna get one more person on the street. Future administrations could be limiting their power if the city administrator takes over the day-to-day operations. The city administration may not have the power to make appointments and move things around that they want. That's a possibility. Political parties might not have as much strength due to lack of appointments. The idea of being a part of a political party that people have set up here in the previous meeting, that never played a role. I can tell you it has for lots of people. Do this, I do that. That stuff happens. Citizens are aware of it, saying up there doesn't make much of a difference. Department heads already have the authority to manage. This is true. They have the authority to manage the Grand Avenue Bridge project, the BRP situation, the ending of the Sheridan Road. All of those things cost us lots of money in the end. Department heads don't always get a chance to do their job fully because they may be working for their job just because of political whims. Some of the pros, we're gonna have a professional, non-party, non-political management with a long-term plan, not just being developed. We do this every few years. We develop a new long-term plan, but actually put it into action. That's what I want to see as a resident. Better allocation of some of our resources, so maybe we can find some extra money for police officers, infrastructure spending without adding on to debt. And the person themselves, they're gonna be held responsible for their results. They're not gonna be able to win an election and keep their job if they do a bad job. The city council will be able to, if you don't show results, we can remove the city administrator. Everyone in the city seems to want a lot of authority, and we must value and expect responsibility. I would also support a referendum on a non-partisanship election. This is our change to move Waukegan forward to a true city of progress. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good job, Jack. Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Charity.
Good afternoon, Mayor Taylor, City Clerk, Councilman. First, I'd like to congratulate Alderman Bolton for a great job that she hosted down at the Boys and Girls Club a few weeks ago, representing the constituents and how to get our, keep our community clean. So I want to thank you, Alderman Bolton. Also, you know, I listen to people when they say Democrat, Republican, whatever. It's not about that. We the people, of the people, for the people. Whoever can get the job done right, let them do it. First of all, they're trying to separate us in the first place. We're one nation under God. I just wanted to make that clear. Anyway, I want to elaborate on what I brought to the board last week regarding the city's eyesores, again, the store on Lincoln and 10th Street, the old Oasis Club. They have handwritten tape signs on the paper, falling down, looking all tacky with eyesores. Talking about Waukegan being a city of progress, these businesses represents the city of regress. Also, I wondered why my car insurance had been going up so much. I called my insurance carrier and they said, uh, it's because of the demographics. Three weeks ago, three crashes in one week on Belvedere and Lewis. My insurance told me it was because of Waukegan demographics. I said demographics, then I realized what she meant. Yes, Waukegan has changed. Waukegan's population is enormous. She told me it would decrease if I moved somewhere else, like, then I'll get less traffic, less accidents, and people. Also, Waukegan was highly respected many years ago. We were all about law and order. Right now, it's not that much law and order. People doing what they want to do. Last but not least, a few years ago, I presented this driver's license plaque, and I knew we, I know we have a new super police chief, Zupac. I have a deaf of hard of hearing grandson. He drives. This community is not user-friendly when it comes to the deaf of hard of hearing. Okay? Now, when we come to city council meetings, you wonder why. It's a lot of deaf people here in Waukegan. They don't participate because a lot of times we don't have a sign language interpreter to let them know what's going on. My grandson worked for United States, or the government. He got a job over there. Every time he pull up to the guard, he shows this plaque. I'm concerned about, suppose the officer pull him over, what are they gonna do? He can't reach down like that. They might think he's trying to pull something to shoot him. What is he gonna do? Should he sit it there? I'm asking Sheriff Zupac. What should they do? Have a seminar with the policeman. It's not only about people who don't understand, it's also about our community who's deaf. This is a plaque. If he's pulling them over, he can say, why are you pulling them over? He can point to the pictures, to the officers, to show why you pulling me over, I'm watching the clock, and to make sure that, you know, why he's pulling over so he can understand because he don't, he don't hear. So that's why I'm here, so we can...
Thank you, Ms. Charity. Andrea Moore.
In response to my requests for reasonable accommodations, according to ADA regulation...
Keep going.
I requested that the council approve an additional minute of speaking time, and they approved.
Yep.
So I will get four instead of three minutes. As mentioned, I, hello, council, my name is Andrea Moore.
Take your time, Andrea, you're fine.
I am a resident connected to Barwell Manor. That, for most of you may not know, that's like the Project Sandor, part of the South Sheridan area. It's actually composed of 120 units, three specifically, one on Genesee, one behind the Family Dollar, and one on Martin Luther King. An effort for the city to push through with some of their often five-year-plan lingo, the rehabilitation of that multifamily unit was one of the first steps. Unfortunately, it commenced...
You're fine, sweetie, just take your time. You're doing great.
At the onset of the pandemic climate, for some reason, no one tried to establish a new or reasonable plan to carry out the much-needed operations for economic growth and opportunity throughout Waukegan. Persons who have experienced the most adverse effects of just simple construction, if you will, are the residents that are normally spoken of in not-so-favorable manners because of things that they do. I mentioned South Sheridan Rehabilitation Plan. A lot of the points mentioned in the plan are very valid. One of the most important that I feel are the inclusion and/or elevation of the people in the community. I myself don't necessarily represent my community well, as in I don't have a criminal background. I am a disabled person, but also young, and I would have graduated with my associates this month if I hadn't been burdened with the task of representing my community in ways that are unreasonable and are considerate for the barriers and/or statistics that are constantly mentioned in journals and/or propaganda.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea.
No, no, she gets an extra minute.
I would like the council to take more consideration for persons who may not understand the day-to-day operations, policy regulations, and/or anything that you actually recognize for someone being worth listening to, please adjust and change. I am one person. I am perfectly fine remaining one person. I am doing a lot, and I'm getting very, very little consideration and/or respect, and it's very frustrating, but I will continue.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea. Try again, Janet. Tell me where...
Diane Verratti, yeah, let me see if this baby...
You ready? Oh, I can get an extra nine seconds. I'll wait for the... Okay, Janet, here I go. "In 2011, I began speaking before this council about the potential of Waukegan's hiring a city manager. I recognize the dedication and commitment of each one of you. However, I believe a city the size of Waukegan deserves a form of government that prioritizes the hiring of an individual who possesses the educational, experience, and administrative qualifications that will propel this city forward. Such a professional will provide the leadership and vision necessary to create the Waukegan that we all talk about but never seem to achieve. Here's a brief description of such an individual from the website of the International City County Management Association. Professional local government managers are hired and directed by the elected governing body to oversee the daily operations of a community. They are nonpartisan and nonpolitical. They may have different titles, but they all oversee the day-to-day business of local governments in an ethical, efficient, and transparent manner. And here are just a few of a long list of the typical responsibilities of a city manager." Again, from the ICMA. "They include encouraging inclusion and building consensus among diverse interests by focusing on the needs of the entire community rather than the interests of only a few individuals. Promoting equity and fairness by ensuring that services are fairly distributed and that administrative decisions such as hiring and contracting are based on merit rather than favoritism. Developing and sustaining organizational excellence and promoting innovation. Ensuring that laws and policies are enforced fairly throughout the community and that the government runs ethically and transparently. Communities that provide an excellent quality of life for their residents don't just happen. They are the result of bold decisions made by elected officials who are willing to envision a future that is different from the past. Some say that Waukegan already has professionals in place as senior staff. Absolutely true, we do. Every one of them is highly qualified for their job, but their vision and impact is limited to their own departments. And with all due respect for your abilities and your representation of your constituents, Alderman, not a single one of you possesses the qualifications that would be delivered by a professional city manager. I believe that Waukegan's future depends on your ability to relinquish the traditional methods of running a large city and usher in a new day, governing in the kind of partnership that I have explained. To be clear, that means that this position is designated to report to the council, the only way to provide the consistency and continuity that will be necessary to move the city forward, no matter who occupies the mayor's office." Twenty seconds left. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Diane.
Good job, Diane.
I need, the next group of five is Doug Petrosius, Clyde McLemore, Theodora Anderson, Jane Waller, and Dr. Michael Reed. That's Doug Petrosius, Clyde McLemore, Theodora Anderson, Jane Waller, and Dr. Michael Reed. It's all yours, sir.
I think I should have grabbed her speech. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the city council. My name is Doug Petrosius, and I've been a resident of Waukegan since 2008. I hold a master's degree in public administration from Northern Illinois University, and I have over 15 years of experience in the field of city management. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen advocating for something I've always wanted in this city, a professional city administrator. The role city administrator is a variation of a position called the city manager, which comes from the council manager form of government, which, it was created in the early 1900s, that is, the form of government of council manager during the progressive era, and is still to this day is the best form of local government. City administrators and managers see their job as a calling. They spend every day of their lives striving to make the big communities a better place. That clock is not ticking down, by the way. The employee best practices in personnel management and financial management, seek to eliminate waste, do more with less, and have very high ethical standards. They avoid involvement in politics and elections. They're champions of transparency in government, and their ultimate goal is to achieve efficiency of the implementation of the mission and policies of the mayor and council. As professional city administrators and managers are highly qualified, according to ICMA, 65% of managers surveyed by ICMA indicated that they had earned a master's degree usually in public administration, business, or public policy, or other advanced degrees. Survey respondents also said that they had spent an average of more than 20 years working in local government management professions. Further, city administrators, managers reduce expenses and continuously seek new innovations of municipal government. Council from form of government still matters, fostering innovation in U.S. municipal governments by Nelson and Svare. Council manager cities generally perform better than mayor council cities with regard to adopting innovations. And again, from ICMA, many local governments have reduced their overall costs after hiring a professional manager. Savings can come from decreased operational costs, increased efficiency and productivity, improved revenue collection, and effective use of technology. Although I have the qualifications, I will not apply for this job. I firmly believe the city administrator should come from outside the city, bringing forth the latest best practices and innovations in this field, particularly with experience from other similarly sized communities. It's for all these reasons and others I've stated here this evening, I ask you make history and vote to create the position of city administrator as proposed. Thank you."
Bingo. Thank you. Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Clyde McLemore, Executive Director of Black Lives Matter Lake County. Today, I entered the Hall Building was told I could not come upstairs by the Waukegan Police Department. This building is which the taxpayers own this building. This is the citizens' building. I told the police to call Bag Up and came up anyway. I had to see a four-year officer, and that's what I was here for. I was praying that they would arrest me because I could use some extra money. If this mayor scared to speak to the citizens, once I ask you, once I ask and I ask you step off the job if it's too much for you. Every citizen doesn't realize they have rights, so stop letting, so they letting you get away with this. After agreement has been made and voted on on this floor, it becomes public record. I've been asking the city for a copy of the settlement with the city antenna, the city ex-financial director. I asked for the settlement so the truth and the facts could come out. Just because I haven't said anything in a couple of meetings doesn't mean I forgot. Last night, an off-duty police officer shot and killed her husband. I heard, I don't know if it's true, but it's supposed to be the young lady Corey, Officer Corey. It will come out. What I don't understand is why she's not arrested as any other citizen, why she didn't have to come up with a high-ass bail to get out. Again, if our police had the proper training, culture complacency training, a lot of these shootings would not have happened, which was suggested in a mediation agreement, which I gave each and every one of y'all a copy of, and you can also look it up online. As I end, I know you wonder why I don't stand when you're doing the pledge allegiance. You don't mean it when you say "justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Teddy Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to advocate for a city manager. That's a little different than a city administrator, and I'm pleased to hear that there's a plan to take this question to the citizens of Waukegan in a referendum. I believe that's the only way to codify by statute the role of the city manager. And I realize that this is a step toward that by hiring a city administrator, but I worry that we might get complacent and just not follow through. And the way the role is structured right now, it is structured to report to the mayor. By statute, it would report to city council. If it reports to the mayor every four years, if we don't approve this by referendum by a city, then the city administrator can... a city, then the city administrator can actually, um, change with the mayor because it's the next mayor's appointment. And I believe that the whole purpose of this is to have consistency, continuity. I think we're trying to heighten customer service on the part of our city. We certainly need to, and if you want, I can give you some examples, and you've been hearing some tonight. The invocation tonight, I think, was really important. How do we have dialogue where we disagree with one another, yet we respect one another and we support one another? And I know I'm taking a little bit different tact on this particular, um, role. I believe the role is important. I want a city administrator, a city manager, but I want to do it right, and I want it to be legislatively correct. And I hope our alderman will choose that role. I think if we educate the city and our population, they're going to make the right choice for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teddy. Judge Jane Drew Waller.
Good evening. My name is Jane Drew Waller, and I am speaking in favor of a city administrator. I am a lifelong resident of Waukegan. My husband, Mike Waller, and I raised our children here, and we pursued our professional legal careers here. And I might add that I'm related to the guy whose name is on the outside of this building. I am proud to be a Waukeganite, but I have been waiting a long time for our beautiful city to maximize its potential. We have acres of undeveloped land, uh... Lakefront, a great beach, a casino in the works, potential for new development downtown, the new CLC building, the restoration of the Carnegie, and a balanced budget that was achieved without raising taxes. And that gives us a unique opportunity to take this city to the next level. Let's hire a city administrator, and as I heard from Teddy, that's really just the first step to putting in place something that this city really needs, which is a, um... Something that the citizens vote for. But let's start with a city administrator to free up this mayor from the day-to-day administration that... So she can pursue federal dollars and state dollars. She can strengthen our partnerships with other governmental entities and businesses. She can listen to the needs of the city, and she can bring new ideas to our city. And let's give our elected officials and our wonderful city staff the expertise of a professional, non-political administrator who has the education, training, and experience to guide staff and implement the policies set forth by the board and the mayor. One must ask, why is it that other cities our size have a city administrator who can provide continuity when administrations change? And recently, there has been a change every four years. I was the chief judge in Lake County, and I know personally how important it is to be able to rely on a professional administrator. And to see the benefits of a professional administrator, we only have to look to the example of our award-winning Park District. Bottom line, I urge the city council to exercise their political will and courage to approve the salary for a city administrator. Let's not continue to do things the old Waukegan way. Let's up our game. Let's take advantage of our balanced budget, spend money wisely, to approve a salary that will attract a top-flight administrator who can take Waukegan to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Waller. Doctor... Doctor Reed.
Good evening, citizens of Waukegan. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Many of you know me, but for those that don't, my name is Dr. Michael Reed. I am the founder and the physician at Family Chiropractic and Sports Rehab, as well as the chairman for the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce. These are not the hats that I'm wearing today. I come here tonight as a lifelong resident of Waukegan. I'm a product of Waukegan. I was born and raised here. I grew up in this system of the school system here, and I am coming to encourage everyone in the council to please pass the ordinance when it comes to our city manager. We are the city of progress, correct? So we need to do things to continue to proceed and build and help grow our city here. The local areas, the surrounding communities such as Libertyville, Mundaline, Kenosha, Gurnee, these are some of the cities that have city managers here. And it's unfortunate that I continue to hear some friends, families, other citizens that they're living in Waukegan, they're leaving, and they're going to these surrounding communities. These are the communities that we are competing with. So in order to compete, we need to bring in a city manager that has the education, that has the skill set, that has for this position here. We cannot be stagnant here in Waukegan. We need to keep moving forward to be the community of progress. Not only is this to be efficient, but also this is cost-effective. We need to return our investment. So unfortunately, we've had a one-term mayor quite some time now. I'm hoping this will change soon. So the mayors will come and go, but we need someone to be consistent here in Waukegan. We need to have this, not only for ourselves, but we need to set up our future for success here in Waukegan. Our children, our grandchildren... I have two little girls that are waiting for me at home right now, and I'm here speaking on their behalf as well. I want the best for this city. I love this city, and we need to continue to grow. We need to continue to have professionalism in the city and to continue to move forward. So I want to thank you, and I really encourage the city council to please pass this ordinance tonight, and let's continue to grow and move Waukegan forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. The next group of five: Calvin Mathis, Brother Blanks, Yeginia Briscoe, Rob Collamore, and Charles Pitts. Again, Calvin Mathis, Brother Blanks, Yeginia Briscoe, Rob Collamore, and Charles Pitts. Ready when you are, sir.
Are you going to do the clock? Oh, I don't have my-
I'm doing this one.
I wasn't ready.
I'm ready when you are.
I was not ready. I thought we were doing that clock up there. Just a second.
I can count down the ten seconds if you need.
Uh, no, I got it right here. Thank you. Uh, good evening. I just want to comment on the city manager and the statement of politicizing the city manager's position. I heard Alderman Hayes say that, uh, the last meeting, and I just wanted to address it. I wasn't sure if that had something to do with our brief conversation that we had, but just in case it did, I... Sir, the gavel has been hit, the roll call has been made, and the clerk said to the mayor, "You have the floor." I call that politics. We're in the heart of politics right now, and we're talking about a political position. I would say this is a... This is politics. So I have a reason to... To say I have some type of concern with this position. And I could, as I said at the last meeting, I don't really care one way or the other. If it works for the city, it works. If it doesn't, then we'll be another Flint, Michigan. But that's... My main thing is that the city works, and it works efficiently and for the best of the citizens. And when it comes to politicizing, as a black man, I can tell you a little bit about the effects of politics. And we can go on and on about the situation that black people find themselves here in America due to politics. I don't even have to mention the Dred Scott case and how many hundreds of years we've had this brutality and coming up to today, right here in the city of Waukegan, as I've been talking about for the last, I don't know, last two years, maybe for the last year about Marcellus Danette and his murder, uh, which there's no answer to. I'm not letting that go because I know the state's prosecutor, everybody wants that to die out, but I haven't forgotten about that. That's politics. And so this city manager position is very important to get it right, if the council decides on it. That's... This is democracy. It still has to be approved. If it doesn't go one way or the other, we need to get over it and move on. But I just want to remind everyone that politics matters, and this is very important to get right, because if it's not done right, then we're not going to go anywhere. And I want to see the city progress. Maybe I'll pay less in taxes and less police settlements for murdering children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. In respect of what Ms. Charity mentioned earlier, for anyone who might be hard of hearing, no disrespect towards you all, who might be hard of hearing or who might be watching from YouTube, who trying to read the words that are coming out of my mouth, I think it's only fair that I put this podium here. Now, second of all, with Mr. Hayes, uh... Stand my appreciations for your encouraging and inspiring words last week when I recited the poem here, uh, considering National Poetry Month. And also with that, I would be quick to add that I would think that, um, the Lake County News-Sun would have thought that it was, uh, newsworthy to document such a thing that you guys was extending something towards a national event. National Poetry Month is not a local poetry month, even though if they may not thought too much of the person that you presented the proclamation to, who you presented it to, and the fact that you acknowledged poetry is two different things. We didn't have to be acknowledged, but I thought that it would have been newsworthy to make sure that this city, which acknowledged National Poetry Month, would have been acknowledged in the paper on that matter. Which leads me to this, which I feel that it is always good to have diversity. It's been said that the News-Sun is moving in a new, uh... In a new approach, which is less diverse and less inclusion. So when we don't have diverse and inclusion, these are the things that happen. Uh, my... My alderman mentioned last city council meeting, uh, her disagreement with the public relations when it came to the amount. And, uh, I think it's good, uh, in public relations, uh, when you're going to write such a check, uh, for that amount. I think it was $9,000 a month. We have the $9,000 a month for the new public... I think that's Hawthorne and Strategy Group. Mr. Goodman came up and mentioned that he was a part of a women-owned business. What really would have been good if Mr. Goodman would've came up here with one of those women, reflecting the diversity in the group, particularly when you're paying out that kind of money. I would like to see between the Goodman, between the Hawthorne and Strategy Group and the, um, public relations that we have here in the city, that is room for more diversity and inclusion. You have, I think, Mr. Uh... Ms. Ferry, she does a good job. Mr. Motley does a good job. But between those two Hawthorne Group and the city, uh, public relations, here's room to grow for more inclusion. We got some nice people that are here in the city who is good in communications. I can think of a couple of them. Shakwita Monique, Inchworm, uh... Yashin Inchworm Phillips. These are young people that we have into the community-
Thank you.
-so I'm not saying anything different-
Thank you.
-just when contractors come-
Thank you so much.
...people in the city.
Yeginia Briscoe, please.
I'm just going to leave the podium where it is. Good evening. I only have four points that I want to make today. Um, one was on the city manager. I strongly, um, agree that we need to move forward with the city manager. At the last city council meetings, there have been a lot of, um, explanations, there have been a lot of information on what the role of the city manager is and what the role of the mayor is, so I'm not going to get into that. Pretty much what everyone has been saying, I support that almost 100%. So just want to say that. Second point is that, um, there's a lot of... There's been a lot of community members and residents that have been coming to the council about what's happening with, um, kind of like gang violence and what... Kind of like what's happening. And I know it was mentioned before that the police here are reactive to situations. I actually lived in Dust Plains many, many years ago, and what they... They were really proactive. It's just something to think about, and what they did, they were... They set up a strategy where they were targeting specifically where, um, there was gang violence in the area. They managed to clean up that area much faster, I would say, over the summer. By winter, we had no more issues with gangs in our area. Something to think about rather than just being reactive. How about being a little bit proactive? We don't have a lot of police, so we know that they need to be used strategically in areas, so why not just place them in those areas? Third point is that I appreciate what was said about the cleanup here, but as a resident, I would also like to encourage the city, the alderman, and the code enforcement to force the businesses to clean up. I walk a lot in the area here, and the businesses are not complying. Not all of them. Some of them are not complying with cleaning up. Thornton's makes a lot of money here, you know, as far as, you know, from the casino, from the gambling, the slot machines up there, and that, it's a mess. And in walking the area, have the businesses also clean up. And hands out to the gentleman that did the cleanup here, but we also need to hold our businesses accountable, too. Third... Fourth point is that panhandling. For some reason, the panhandling is starting to get, like, out of hand again. As I was driving to the city council meeting today, it was about five people in the corner asking for money for funerals. I think that we need to do something, again, take a look at the panhandling. There was a sign on Washington and Green Bay about panhandling. I think that's Green Bay. But now the sign is gone, and there's usually people on about four corners there all the time. So if we want to clean up the city, how about cleaning up with the panhandling, too? If you go into other towns, you don't see it as bad as it is here in Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Briscoe. Rob Collamore.
Bob Collamore, Waukegan. Waukegan Police Department deserves a lot of criticism for many things, but not tonight. Tonight, we need to offer them our condolences to all the Waukegan Police Department and their family members. I ask everyone here and at home, pray for them, because they're hurting. Second, I'd like to commend the police department. A couple of weeks ago, a couple of guys were on patrol, and they spotted a guy, and they were able to... Spotted a guy who pointed a gun at them. They were able to arrest the guy without loss of life or serious injury, and that's a big step forward. That's how it should be done, and I think, you know, other towns could take a study on that one. That's about it. Other than, we do need a city manager. There's a difference between an administrator and a manager, and I understand the manager is the full stop, the full measure, and that's what this town needs. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collamore. Uh, Mr. Charles Pitts. We got a few more left. Mr. Charles Pitts, Rayon Edwards, Margaret Carrasco, and Kate Collamore. You're going to... Go ahead, Mr. Pitts.
Um, when people want to talk about panhandling, you need to consider the freedom of speech and the Constitution of the United States. I want to talk about, in part, the Civil Service Committee. I'm wondering that it needs a major overhaul, and I guess I'm still looking for information as to when they're going to meet, so that's a major problem. Let's talk about the... The contract with the city and county of San Francisco, uh... The police contract with Waukegan. It's about to expire. Well, it expired in April. I'm wondering, will there be any type of community outreach about their negotiations? And what's the... What's the plan? Because it's like, the police have blocked any type of civilian complaints against the police department, or any type of accountability measures from the police department, I mean, from the community. So the Civil Service Commission is pretty much blocked out of doing anything to hold the police department accountable. My understanding of the contract with the police in Waukegan, if a citizen has a complaint, they need to go through the mayor's office. There's no... There's no one else, um, other than that and hiring an attorney. I'm also concerned about your process. The police... The police officer just shot and killed someone, just a couple hours ago. So what's the process? I'm used to when the police kill someone, they come to the community within ten days, and then they show some videos, some type of evidence of what happened, but it's just like- like, ultimately, why are we behind? Why, it's like, why do we hide these things and leak something out to the media, or let the media investigate the best they can? I mean, ultimately, I'm looking for transparency and how they handle issues. I'm also throwing it out there again, Waukegan has paid over $30 million in wrongful imprisonment cases. And at this point, I think we need the cops program from the feds to come investigate all of the mechanics of the police department instead of ineffective and outdated policing techniques, such as locking a person in a room until they confess when the police have already created.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Thank you. Rayon Edwards, please.
Good evening, council. I come up here, and it's funny to me, once again, y'all, I really don't understand a lot of what we discuss when we come here. As I'm coming out today, there was a shooting on Jackson. It's not Waukegan, it's considered North Chicago, but a gentleman was on his lawn were riding, and it was a drive-by, and he was killed. We talking about bringing businesses to Waukegan? Have anybody looked around Waukegan lately? Because I've been here 44 years, and I'm ready to run right now. I'm terrified. It's scary, y'all. Yesterday, we had five women in the city of Waukegan at a gas station pumping gas, and a car, a young man, pulled up to get ready to take their car. I'm terrified, y'all. Now, we could sit up here, and we can keep playing politics, we can keep on fighting with the police, but they got a job. We could keep on talking about what they ain't doing, but what are we going to help them do? How else are we going to solve this madness? I don't care how many city managers we get, or what we bring in the city. Right now, we don't have no businesses that want to stay here. We don't have people that want to come here. We're not competitive. Have anybody looked around lately? We come up here every week, and we, every other week, and we talk about what the city need. Is anybody talking about the future of the city? And that's our kids. I don't hear that. Is we going to put any focus or any attention on that? If so, when? We losing right now. 44 years here in this city, and I ain't never seen it like this. This is the worst it's ever been. And so I'm saying to you nine aldermen's up there, today, I hope today be a revelation. Let's go knock on some doors and talk to your constituents and see what they feeling, how they feel, what they need, and how you can help them. This is how you build a city. Fighting and arguing, politics is disgusting. And so I'm going to say two things before I sit down. When we say what the city need, we definitely need a city manager. We do. We have to be more competitive, y'all. We're not. We're not business friendly. We're not kind at all. Now, but what we need to do is allow the people to decide those type of things right there when we're changing. And when she campaigned, this mayor, she campaigned on that, and they voted. Whether you guys like it or not, huh, that's what it is. And the second thing that we need to do, man, and I stress this enough, we have to start being adults, start learning how to communicate properly, learning how to agree to disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
We're not going nowhere.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. I also attended the second ward and fourth ward alderman community meeting, which was held at the first ward, which, like, that doesn't make sense. Anyhow, it was just a political photo op of candidates running for office, and maybe only five residents actually from that ward's attended, whose questions were not answered, Mr. Seager. Because they selected the questions that they wanted, the nice questions, okay? We know how the game's played. And then they had the department heads parade around there. Heck, they spoke longer than Seager did. I think he only spoke only for five seconds. Anyhow, but what's really interesting was, fourth ward alderman Raldel Kirkwood. Sir, with all due respect, you failed to tell our Waukegan taxpayers the real deal. Based on what several police officers have stated to me, from when you have every single police department, all Lake County, called to your business, how much is that costing Waukegan tax dollars? We're jeopardizing the safety of our police officers because it's that dangerous and that frequent. I mean, I lost the count, sir. How many incidents have you had? The most violence, the most drive-by shootings, the most huge fights are taking place. Yes, his business is located on the corner of Waukegan and Sunset Avenue. Therefore, as the city of Waukegan continues to be jolted by violence, Mayor, we elected you to do a job, and it's clearly not acceptable. I demand that fourth ward alderman Raldel Kirkwood's business be shut down, liquor license revoked, just like all other businesses with less incidents have been. Legal counsel, I'm sending an email to you to verify if he renewed his liquor license on Friday. He was open this weekend? How could that be if it was not? In closing, they say, where there's smoke, there's fire. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kate Collamore, please.
Good evening. A month ago or so, I came before you, and I made a few comments. That evening, I took time to thank council members who were courteous enough to return my calls and discuss my concerns. Tonight, I would like to do the same, but first, I would like to tell you why I'm here. Recently, I was approached by an established business owner who asked if I could put them in touch with the city leaders to discuss a potential opportunity for the downtown area. This business is owned by two Waukegan residents, primarily serves Waukegan families in need, has been located and operating in the Waukegan area for almost 15 years, has the market research to show that they draw between 500 and 1,000 customers every weekend. They sincerely wanted to conduct business in downtown Waukegan. With that said, I would like to thank Alderman Kirkwood. He returned my calls, listened to the idea, visited the business on more than one occasion, and met with the business owners. Sadly, there seems to have been some miscommunication with City Hall, and my call went unanswered, and the problem has now appeared to have been corrected, but the business owners, like so many others in the past, has decided to go to Pleasant Prairie. Hanging all your hopes on the casino, thinking that it alone will magically fix all our financial problems, while the calls of an involved constituent with ties to an established business owner is not the best plan of operation. I'll end this by saying, the Collamores will actively and enthusiastically support any candidate or elected official who works with us and our small business owner friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collamore. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Well, thank you, everyone. This was a very nice to hear from our residents, and like I said, we had 18 people talk tonight, so thank you for coming. We will go on to the consent agenda. We will do the whole thing. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda to be heard in full? Can I have a first?
I'll second it.
Alderman Rivera and Alderman Turner. Any questions to any of these items? Okay.
Did that include new businesses, Will?
New business, yes.
No, this is just the consent agenda we're doing. Item A, motion to approve vendor payments dated April 29, 2022, in the total amount of $2,501,163.46. Item B, motion to authorize the expedition of funds under the contract of Coventa Environmental Solutions LLC for fiscal year 2022-23 in the amount of $55,125 for an annual pumping pursuit of Section 2-458i-1 sole source. Funds must be charged to line item 556916024505. Item C, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Baxter and Woodman for preparation of the IEP-A project plan for the city's water main replacement project for a not-to-exceed lump sum amount of $30,000 with 5% being held back until IEP-A approval. Funds to be charged to line item 555915524438. Item D, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a professional service agreements with Sea Urba Group for a not-to-exceed amount of $98,075 to design plans to approximately 30% for culvert replacements throughout the city. Funds to be charged to line item 205120527706. Item E, motion to approve the regular payroll dated April 22, 2022, in a total amount of Item F, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, paid holiday buyback, comp time, local 150 allowance, final payout dated April 22, 22, in a total amount of $55,899.61. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports in communication, old business, or no old business, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item E.
I would like to second that.
Which one? I didn't hear. Item E. We have to go in order, don't we?
No, we have to go in order.
Go in order, and I was going to say we go omnibus, and I'd like to pull out D and E.
Isn't there a motion and a second on the floor?
There is a motion. The motion is a procedural one to take item E first.
Yes.
So it is out of order, so you'd have to do two motions. One, to move consideration of item E forward. If that passes, you can vote on that immediately. Otherwise, we proceed in the order on the agenda. So there is a motion to consider item E. It sounded like by Alderman Florian, it sounded like there was a second by Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, do you want discussion on this, or?
I mean, we can discuss, with the procedure, we can discuss it now, I suppose. If we want to move it to the front, doesn't matter. It's going to be discussed sooner or later. If we want to discuss it now, it doesn't matter to me. We have to make a vote to move it to the front?
Yes. Yes.
So Alderman Florian, you want to move this to the front?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'll for a question on that motion.
Okay.
You need a vote on that motion?
Yeah, so we can, we have a first by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Hayes, to move it to, I'm sorry.
Rivera.
I thought you had Florian and Rivera.
Yeah, but I thought we were doing a separate motion to move it to the front.
That is the first.
That's the motion.
Okay. Okay, do, roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
It doesn't matter when we talk about it, aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Out discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion.
We need a motion and a second also.
So now it's up, we need a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second. Let's clarify, what are we doing?
Now we're going to discuss it and vote on it.
There was a motion to approve an ordinance.
So Alderman Bolton, there was a motion to move item E under new business to the front, that is now being considered, and then we called for a motion to actually approve that item, and there will be discussion on that motion.
You're really muffled. Let's talk about it.
Okay, go ahead, you can, who wants to?
Me and Alderman Kirkwood, I also talked to Alderman Newsom, we had planned on holding this over. I think there still needs to be some things worked out and teased out. I'll give you a little history lesson, I don't remember if Diane Varetti remembers, but I met with her and some other people in a basement to talk about a city manager. There's also an article that that gentleman wrote when he asked me about a city manager. I am in full support of a city manager, but I want it on the ballot. I want the people of Waukegan to decide that. The mayor has intimated that. The problem with the city administrator position right now is you're going to pay a city administrator $250,000, $300,000, and you are saddled with the mayor's salary for the next three years. You cannot change it. You cannot change the mayor's salary. So you have a full-time city administrator and a full-time mayor, and an assistant city administrator, which is now the chief of staff. Does the city of Waukegan taxpayers want to pay that much money for leadership? I don't know. That's why I'd like to hold this over for two weeks and get the temperature of the community. I've been the, I have the floor, please. I've been the biggest promoter of this. Ask anybody that's talked to me. Teddy Anderson, come up here and say what you said again. You couldn't have been better. I want this, I told the mayor, I've talked to her about this. I want this as bad as anybody, but I want it done right. I want it done right. I'm tired, 19 years, revolving doors of mayors. I've had five of them, or we've had five of them, excuse me. I would hope that we would respect each other enough up here. Alderman Newsom herself, she told me she'd like to hold this over too. Alderman Kirkwood has told me that also. I'd hope we respect each other, and maybe we can get this worked out. Because remember, change happens at the speed of trust. So that's what I'd like to do, hold it over, let Alderman Newsom come back, I have respect for her. I think something this important of a change to the city, all nine of us need to be here. Is the city ready to pay that much? Now, if we could do something with the mayor's salary, it would be a no-brainer. But as this sits right now, this is a position, just like the chief of police, just like the fire chief, just like the director of public works, they will become an officer of the city. They are appointed by the mayor and approved by us, just like any other position, excuse me, officers of the city. So I still think there needs to be some questions answered, there needs to be discussion on this matter, but I am all for professional management. But again, Mrs. Anderson hit it on the head. I want this done right. Go back and look in the News Sun, he wrote an article about how he wanted to change the form of government. You have to remember, there's a city administrator, that's not a change of government. That's not a change. That's just a position. The actual city manager, part-time mayor, council is an actual change in city government. I think that's what we need. I understand the mayor's point of dovetailing to get there. I get it. But I don't know the people that I've talked to. They're not ready to swallow that salary pill. That's a lot of money to pay three people. That's a lot of money. But if we can get this worked out somehow, and come together, because do you really think a city administrator is going to come here and work for a divided council? Who's going to take that job? And you can say it takes out the politics, but ask any city manager worth his salt, he's got to count votes too, or her salt. They got to count votes. At the end of the day, us and I still make the decision. That person has to talk to us on where we stand on issues. They just can't do what they want. So I'm trying to unite the council and get this done, not divide it, not jam it down our throat. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? Can I just add one thing before I call on others? Is, I wanna say, I don't know what Alderman Newsom's vote, or her objections, because she's not indicated that in any meetings that the chief and I have had.
I talked to her today.
Well, I talked to her last night, and she hasn't mentioned anything, so I can't tell you what her pros or cons would be, but I just wanna make that clear, that, that hasn't come to me. Who was next? Alderman Rivera.
I just wanna make a statement from what Alderman Moiseo indicated, that it is a lot of money. It is, it is a lot of money that we are spending, but we're worth it, you know? Waukegan is worth investing in our future and, and our stability. And I just don't wanna, you know, second change it by saying that it's too much money. We, we have the funds, no one's taxes are being raised, we're, we're able to work this out, and, and for me, Waukegan is worth it. Waukegan is worth the money that we're spending.
Alderman Florian? Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the police and fire when you were speaking, Alderman Moiseo, because I have the salaries of all the city employees here, and our police department administration, including our chief and our three deputy chiefs, which we'll have once, now that the budget was passed, costs us roughly six hundred and three thousand dollars for just the police department top four officials. The fire department has a, a chief and battalion chiefs, that costs us seven hundred and three thousand dollars just for the top four fire officials. The mayor's office with this city administrator is gonna cost us five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, way less than either the police or the fire. Doesn't the mayor deserve professional people in her, her office, just like Chief Zupac and Chief Paiser deserve in their office, running there? She runs the whole city. We're just talking about the police and fire department at six hundred and seven hundred thousand. I think our mayor is worth it, and as Alderman Rivera said, I think our city is worth it. And I have one more question for you, Alderman Moiseo. You've been a teacher how many years? I'm gonna guess about thirty-four, you're a little younger than me.
Thirty-two.
Okay, so when you started teaching, I'm sure you had a, a certain salary, I'm not gonna ask you what it was, even though it's probably public information, and I'm guessing now your salary's probably double or triple of what it was when you started?
Yeah, probably, I don't know, look it up. It's not hard.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not here to talk about your, your numbers. What I'm, what I'm trying to make is this point. Why does the school district pay you more now than they did when you started?
Because that's the way school salaries are structured on experience, it's just the way it is.
Experience?
Mm-hmm.
Experience, and that matters, right?
Yeah.
When we have a new mayor every four years, how much experience do they have?
You're arguing the same-
They have zero experience coming into being a mayor. We get a city administrator, it's someone who's got experience. We have to start somewhere. I have the floor, just like you did when it was your turn. We have to start somewhere. I agree this needs to go on the ballot, I totally agree, but we have to start somewhere. We have a casino coming, we have all this money we're gonna be getting, we, we have a crumbling infrastructure, we have crime we need to, we have so many issues we need to address. We need a professional administrator to help us do that.
But, but, but one thing, every five mayors that I've worked with has run knowing that they are the day-to-day manager. They know that coming into the job. They know it. Now, I'll give this mayor credit, she's trying to change that, but they all, I don't know if the public knew that, you are saddled with that salary. And I, I agree with you, Alderman Rivera, Waukegan is worth it, but I think, I think we need to ask our residents a little bit more if they're willing to pay for that much. I think we need, I think we need to ask. Is two weeks gonna kill this? It's not time-sensitive. And out of respect to Alderman Newsom, I, I, she needs to be here. I would not want this to happen to any of you up here on something this big if you were not here. That's me.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. Well, it's a lot to cover here, let me see if I get some high points and counterpoints. Firstly, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. So firstly, as far as Alderman Newsom not being here, she's not here, we can't stop the city's business because one alderman is not here, that's why we have a quorum. You know, we keep talking about the city manager and, and/or city administrator, what, you know, every organization has what? An executive director. Let's change the calling with executive director, maybe that would make it more palatable. We need professionalism. Greg, Greg.
With you.
You've been here longer than I have, I wasn't raised in Waukegan, I've only been here twenty-two years, but in my experience, and I stood back in that corner twenty years, nineteen years, I've never seen a professional sit in the mayor's chair. Number one, not a professional manager of executive caliber, executive caliber leadership, we have never had it. We have never had continuity of leadership, we've never had it. What if we get a guy that sells meat at the fruit market? How's that gonna work? Because it's a popularity contest. All of our elections are popularity contests, right? So let's take that out of it and get a professional leading this city and continuity of vision and, and capabilities and capacities, let's get that done. There's no need to hold this over. We have talked about it, we've heard about it, and we are here to make a decision. And this idea that we need to go back to our constituents and ask them what they think, they elected us to make those decisions, that's why we sit here. So I think we need to move forward. You know, we, we always, the motto, city of progress, where's the progress? We're progressive, and Greg, I've heard you say it in numerous others, so I'm not just gonna point the finger at you.
That's fine.
Right? But it's, it's variations on this. We've done this for thirty years, we've always done it this way, this is how we do it in Waukegan. Well, when do we stop doing how we did and start doing how we're supposed to do, how we need to do? Right? You and I agree, we talk about not being business-friendly, let's take the politics and personalities out of that, we got a professional city manager or administrator leading the city who's not politically motivated, who will get things done. And I think that's what we need to do, is take a vote on it.
You're all preaching to the choir. I've stated all those points long before tonight. I've stated all those points.
Let's vote on it. Why hold it over? Let's vote.
Just remember, counselor, how many votes does it, does it take to seat a city official? Police chief and fire chief?
How many does it take?
Are you asking for this ordinance?
It takes five, correct?
Yes, yes.
Keep that in mind.
I had my hand up.
I don't want, I don't want that to happen, but keep that in mind.
Um, I, first off, I don't really think that's a good threat, I mean, that's-
It's not a threat, I'm trying to, to get this done the right way, as Ms. Anderson had said.
But it would still be going to referendum anyway, but actually-
Excuse me.
You don't have the floor, it's Alderman Bolton right now.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm all about the city moving forward, I understand change is important, however, I second that, that you all need to participate and understand with clarity what is the difference in concerning this budget. And it also, I've been waiting for it in writing, what is the, what is the, the, the strategy? What is the job, different job tasks involved? City manager, city administrator, deputy mayor, we all need to understand what each of those-
But you had that this week, right?
I never got that through, I was supposed to have gotten that Thursday, and I did not get it. However, our constituents as well need to know.
Hey, can I see-
So I second that, we need to hold it over, and let's process this a little bit more.
Okay, Alderman Turner and then Alderman Hayes.
Thanks, you know, I find it kinda curious and ironic, right? A little bit ago, we talked about going to nonpartisan elections, right? And you guys sat down there and you talk about, no, we don't need to do that, no democracy, right? Now we talk about a city administrator, and what they say, huh, we need democracy, we need to go to the people and let the people decide. So the people get to decide whether we have a, a city administrator, but the people don't get to decide what form of government we take and how we get there. That doesn't make sense. You're, you're convoluted, you're flipping back and forth, and, and I think, I'd like to make a motion that we not hold this over and move forward.
Well, you, actually, we have a motion right now for it to be voted on, but I wanna hear Alderman Hayes first.
Thank you. I think the points made by the audience members tonight, and my counterparts in the sixth, seventh, and eighth ward are, are terrific, so thank you, thank you, Alderman Florian, the numbers, I mean, the numbers don't lie, I, I think we could make a decision just based on those numbers alone, but taking this, saying that you wanna take this back out and talk to your constituents, that, that's why we're here tonight, and that's why we were here two weeks ago. They had an opportunity to come here, they had an opportunity to call, they had an opportunity to text or somehow make their, their voices known. Yes, they elected us to speak for them, but they also had a chance to come here, and I, I think we have to seriously consider those individuals that took time out of their schedules, took time away from their kids to come here tonight and prepare remarks, and last week, and speak on behalf of this position. These are all of our constituents that are here. Some of them announced their words, but I didn't hear anybody from the first ward, I didn't hear anybody from the third ward, I didn't hear anybody from the second ward coming out in opposition. You had an opportunity to call them and ask them to come and speak, and deliver their message, and tell us how they feel. We would've listened, like we listen to everybody else. So I, I think it's, we have to call it what it is, which is a delay tactic. I also think that this is, the, the motion to vote on it is already pending, but to try to hold it over is just pure gamesmanship, and the reason I know that it's gamesmanship or politics or however we wanna call it is that we're approving the hiring of thirty-two other people, and nobody objected.
Not one.
I, I mean, I, I can go through the list, but we have, you know, twelve police officers, we have an IT technician, we have an HR generalist, we have a laborer, we have a firemaster mechanic, a finance coordinator, all positions that we need filled in this city, but nobody's objecting to those, to those positions. How about we go back a couple of weeks? What did we approve with no objection? Ambulances, police cruisers, police gear, IT hardware, IT software. We approved mental health guidance and policies and resources for city, uh, excuse me, for police officers, and there wasn't even a number put on that. We feel so strongly about that mental health component that we didn't put a number on it. The point of all of this is, and the reason I draw your attention to the fact that nobody objected about this, or objected to this, is that these are resources, these are critical resources that the city needs. We all voted for them, we wish we could do more, but that's what we can do right now. By voting against a city manager, you're, you're effectively championing the status quo. We're up here to make change. You're, you're effectively saying that the city's already running optimally, which it's not, because we hear from people every week, they come and tell us that's not, and we can do better, and we should do better, and we must do better, and that's what we're trying to do. The status quo isn't good enough, it's certainly not good enough for me, I know it's not good enough for you, Alderman Moiseo. I, I think, you know, I, I think that this can be framed in a lot of ways, but the through line, the common theme of why we're up here is transformation, progress, and change. And if there's anything I know, it is that change is rarely convenient, there is never a perfect time for change. The perfect time for change isn't two weeks from now, it's not three years from now when you have a chance to ding the mayor's salary, I mean, that's a red herring, we, we shouldn't be discussing the mayor's salary, law prevents us from changing it until it comes up for, until she's no longer in office, so that shouldn't even be an issue. There's no perfect time to change, there's no perfect way to change. As I said, change is uncomfortable and change is scary. But we've been doing things with a, with a mayor being the central kind of position of power in the city for a really, really long time, and I wanna know what it says to everybody, that we have a mayor now who is willing to delegate that power, who is willing to neutralize the power of the mayor's office, allow the city council to hire a city manager, city administrator at first, this is the difference, Alderman Bolton, then it becomes a city, a city manager upon referendum. She's willing to neutralize her own power, she's willing to give it to the city council so that we can interview, hire, take to task, and then fire if necessary. Everybody loves to come to city council and tell us that we're not doing enough, and maybe that's true, but what, what I can tell you is that our bark is a lot louder, a lot louder than our bite right now. But if we have a city administrator, if we have somebody who has to answer to us, if we have somebody that we empower with the ability to implement the policies that we put in place every two weeks, we are gonna be stronger and we are gonna be better for it. So I, I really want you to think critically about this, and I think we have to, we are going to vote on it, but we should vote in favor of it now. We have a forward-thinking mayor, as I had indicated, and I think now is the best time for us to, to make a change. People are ready for it, we hear it every week. So I, I'm obviously in favor of it, I say it every other week, but I, delaying for two weeks is just, there's no point, because we're, we're gonna get individuals that come out in favor, and we're not gonna hear from anybody else in the community. Maybe they don't deem it important enough, I don't know what it is, but the issue is ripe, we have an opportunity to make a change, the ordinance is drafted, we've approved all these other changes that nobody has any objections to, it's just this one, conveniently, it's just this one change. So to, to say that it's not politics and to say it's not gamesmanship is just inaccurate. So we vote on it, we vote in favor of it, and the city leaps forward.
Real quick, I've been, I've been for change since two thousand and eleven, as Mrs. Verratti will attest to. Everything you guys have said, I, I, I agree with, except like I said, I wanna do this right. Now, I mean, I, I, a quick question for counselor, if you vote on the prevailing side of this, it can be reconsidered in two weeks?
You wanna, we actually have talked about this, and you wanna explain it?
About reconsideration, or just the, or, or the motion to hold over?
Motion to hold over.
Okay, well, now, it's actually not a motion, but there, just to, to clarify something, Alderman Moiseo, and then I can talk about reconsideration, is that section twenty-seven, two dash seventy-three of the code says that every ordinance or other matter coming before the council shall, at the request of any member of the council, be held over until the next regular meeting before a vote is taken thereon, unless by the consent of two-thirds of all members of the council present, the same shall be taken up for immediate consideration. So you do, we do have a request from Alderman Moiseo to hold this over, that doesn't mean that it cuts off debate, but a vote will not be held unless there is an intervening motion to consider it immediately, which would require two-thirds of the city council, which the mayor has actually counted in the city council, so it would require seven votes affirmative to have the, have the vote tonight.
I wonder if clarification, don't we already have a motion pending though, and there's actually no formal motion to hold it over?
Right.
So if, aren't we voting on the motion that's been put before us before we can consider anything else?
What I'm saying is, though, that the, the actual language of the code would supersede the parliamentary procedure, and it does not say when that request has to happen, and it does not say that it has to happen by motion, it says simply upon the request of any member of the council. And I, I do appreciate the question you're asking, because we do have a motion on the table, or the, motion on the floor, and looking at the way that the section of the, the code is written, and these are provisions that the city council has adopted to govern itself, and so-
So I guess one thing I would like to say is, if this is held over, then I think we have one alderman missing at the next meeting, so would it be okay, and could we agree to hold it over until, what is that, June third? Is that our next city council, like the, not the next one?
Mayor, we, we, we talked in here, and I, I told you how passionate I want this to happen. Did I not?
Yeah.
Let's vote for it then. You want it to happen, let's make it happen.
But I, but, but not, not, not at the present format that it is.
What's the point of holding it over?
Why would we delay a year?
Again, that, the, the fact that we have to pay a full-time city administrator and a full-time mayor, that's a hard pill to swallow, and Alderman Hayes, in all due respect, I've had a lot of people that I've talked to outside of this chamber that have told me, that's a hard pill to swallow. They don't, they're, they're not sure of that yet.
Okay, I'll tell you-
They're not sure of that.
Okay, I'll tell you what I'm, okay, wait, wait, wait.
Do they know how much we're actually talking about?
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, because, okay, every, Alderman, hold. What I'm gonna do is, we will hold this over, but I want a motion to approve it until that first meeting in June. until that first meeting in June.
At the table, then, correct, Alderman?
So, you can, a motion to, you can do a motion to table. The actual, if you're going to do it to a specific time, the correct motion under parliamentary procedure would be a motion to postpone consideration to, and if you have a date certain, the first meeting in June is June 6th. And is that a, is that a meeting where you expect to have a full attendance?
One other question. Did I miss Alderman Seeger? Did you have your hand up at one point? Okay, it's hard for me to see, so I don't, I don't want to make you feel I dismissed you. I just can't see you properly.
Mayor, I've got a question. What's the hurry on this?
Well, we've answered that now. We're going to hold it over, and that would be June 6th. And that's that first meeting in?
Yes, the first meeting in June would be Monday, June 6th.
Okay, so, we're going to hold it over till then.
Okay, so, if that's the consent?
Can we take a vote on holding it over, just so everyone has to go on record that that's what they wanted to do? Because I'm not really, I don't really want to go on record that I was okay with holding it over.
Okay.
I wanted to vote on it tonight, and I want to be on record as saying that I did.
So, once again.
There's a door.
Section 2-73 states that it shall be held over unless there is a vote to not hold it over. So, you can do, you have a few options here. You could either vote not to hold it over, and if you don't get seven votes, then that fails, and we're back to the, we're back to the being held over. You can do a motion to postpone to June 6th. Or we can go back to, well, actually, we really can't go back to the motion on the table, because Section 2-73 says that we'll come back in two weeks.
I'm not clear on what's going to happen between now and whenever, whether we hold it over for two weeks or four. What's going to happen in that swing, in that window? That could, what? Oh.
I, things are getting confusing, so let's just do the motion for June 6th. Okay?
So moved.
Okay, first, a second.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Turner. Okay, roll call, please.
Let me get that straight. That's Mozzio first, Turner second, to postpone consideration to June 6th, correct?
Yes.
Alderman Mozzio.
Yeah, for June 6th, aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye, definitely.
Wow.
So. Five to three. Okay, motion pass.
The motion we placed on the agenda at the 6/6 meeting, June 6th, for further consideration.
Okay.
I don't know.
Back to, did anybody want to do omnibus?
Yeah, I'd like to do an omnibus.
Okay, Alderman Turner, second.
I'd like to pull out something.
Okay.
We're talking about new business?
What?
She wants to pull out something.
Okay. Alderman Turner was for an omnibus. I need a second for an omnibus.
I'm sorry, omnibus for new business?
Yes.
I'd like to pull out B.
Item B?
Yes.
And I'd like to pull out item C. Well, we still save some time. Was it B, C, and D?
Yep, okay. Okay, so, you're voting on item A. F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O. Yes.
As a matter of fact, I'd like to hold over the, same time we're going to be discussing the...
The ordinance? Okay, that's perfect, so.
Hold us all together.
Okay, so, can we have a motion to hold that over?
I second.
Okay.
Hold on, it's, so, the, so, item D is the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
The appropriate time to request being held over is when it's called up.
Okay, yeah.
I just don't want to get the, I don't want to get the motion screwed up. So, that has been pulled from, that has been pulled from the omnibus motion for new business, and then when it comes up, Alderman Kirkwood is likely going to make a motion to hold over.
Okay, so, I'll start with item A. A motion to approve a resolution approving a memorandum of key terms for the construction development and operation of the temporary by American Place and the American Place Casino. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item F, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to adopt a resolution approving a four-year contract with the Sigma Group for the environmental operation and maintenance services for the containment cells at the former OMC site and Waukegan Harbor Slip 3 site for the pricing of $43,785 for fiscal year 2223, $43,456 for 2324, $45,195 for 2425, and $47,002 for 2526. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item G, a motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with EJUSA Inc. for the 2022 hydrant bid in an amount not to exceed $60,000. The matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item H, a motion to approve resolutions approving contracts with the low-qualified bidders, Peter Baker &amp; Sons of the Lake Bluff, Illinois, for the purchase of asphalt, and Aziga &amp; Mokina, Illinois, for the purchase of concrete, as listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2022 annual commodities bid. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item I, a motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with EJUSA Inc. for the 2022 manhole and catch basin frames and grates in an amount not to exceed $59,000. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item J, a motion to adopt a resolution approving contracts with Cerus LLC and Alexander Chemical and USAL Co. for the water plant treatment chemicals for fiscal year 2223, as listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab. The matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item K, a motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Carbine Activated Corp. as the low-qualified bidder, as listed on the attached bid tab for fiscal year 2223, the anthrify filter meter bid. The matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item L, motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Sintas for the Public Works and Water Department Uniform Bid. This will be a bid for a four-year contract with the option to extend for four additional one-year periods, funds to be charged to the various line items. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item M, a motion to waive the competitive bidding process by good faith waiver per Section 2-458 I-7, and approve a resolution approving a contract with Peter Baker &amp; Sons for an amount not to exceed $204,686.50 for paving of traditions at Glen Flora and Blanchard Road. Funds to be charged to the line item 312-131-227635. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item N, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to enter into professional services agreement with Sea Urban Group for an amount of $35,436.45 for revised proposal of the watershed permit and project reviews. Funds to be charged to line item 10910124435. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Item O, a motion to approve an ordinance adopting a new ward map based on the 2020 Centennial Census. This matter was presented to the Committee of the Whole on May 2nd, 2022. Any questions to those motions? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Actually, I need to know who seconded that. I have Turner making the motion for omnibus. Who seconded?
Wasn't it Rivera?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, a motion to adopt, well, there was a discussion on this one, correct? One of this one pulled out. Item B.
That was Alderman Bolton, I believe.
Yes. So, I understand B is concerning the hours of operation, and I understand it was presented to us for also not only hours of, but the construction, the development, as well as the operation. Now, in our city council review, I'm understanding the Illinois Gaming Board indicated that we are, they received an owner's license to own it, but my concern is, why are we leasing if we should go ahead and sell the property before they start building a temporary? Is my first question.
So, just to clarify, the memorandum of understanding was actually already voted on, the memorandum of key terms, so that's already been approved. What you pulled was simply the 24-hour, but I can't answer your, I can answer your question. So, the alderman is asking about the proposed real estate arrangement between Full House and the City of Waukegan. When Full House presented originally back in the fall of 2019, all of the bidders selected the Fountain Square site as a potential location for their casino. And of the, of the four bidders who went through, went fully through the certification process, although only three were finally certified, three of them presented offers to purchase the property outright. Full House did a different arrangement. It proposed to do a ground lease whereby it would pay a minimum of $3 million a year, and, but with a maximum per year of 2.5% of their adjusted gross revenue. At the time, they also reserved the right at any time to purchase the property for $30 million. That was approximate, that was, the other offers for the property were $11 million, $5.6 million, and then $22 million, but it would be $10 million, and then $1 million a year for 12 years. Full House gave the highest bid, when you count the purchase option plus the ground lease, by far. What has been negotiated now, and what was included in the memorandum of key terms, was that Full House would ground lease the property for no less than $3 million a year for up to the time where they build the permanent. And then, they could exercise their purchase option for $30 million. They've indicated that they will likely exercise their purchase option sooner than later. What that means, and this is, I know this is a lot of, a very complicated thing to be talking about this late in a meeting, but what this means is that the city is basically guaranteed between $36 and $39 million for the property within four years, depending on when the permanent facility is completed. That is, in a nutshell, the real estate deal.
So, the thing is, what, and thank you for sharing that. Now, what is the state statute's shared revenue?
Yeah, so, in addition to the, in addition to the price of the property, now, not every community that has a casino gets money for the property that the casino is built on. Rockford did not, the City of Des Plaines did not. Those were bought on private property. So, the city is getting upfront this money for the property. In addition to that, and basically forever, or until the state changes the law, the City of Waukegan will get 3.5% of the casino's annual gross revenue. Why is it 3.5%? The law actually says that the local share is 5%. However, when this law was written, there was a revenue split that was added that divides 1.5% of the local share between other communities. North Chicago, Park City, and am I forgetting one?
Warren.
Oh, in the county, thank you. Never forget the county.
I'm sorry, say it again.
And the county.
And the county.
So, and that was, that's how the law was written. But I think that is important to keep in mind, because when we're talking about the amount of money that the city will be getting from revenue, getting from the sale of the property, there is also ongoing revenues that will continue on. Wagering taxes, 3.5%, admissions taxes. Every time a person walks into the casino, a dollar comes back to the city. Not like immediately, but like a dollar is counted. And then, there are also property taxes. You can ask, well, we're leasing the property. How can there be property taxes, even though it's exempt? The leasehold, the actual interest that they will have in the property will be taxable. Sales taxes, food and beverage taxes, hotel taxes. All of those will come in their normal shares to the city. So, it is kind of a lasagna of revenue, and the...
In layman's terms, lasagna revenue.
Yes, yes, there's many, a lot of different layers, and we tried to, and we tried to stick in as much ricotta as we could, and so, but...
But this is my question, and thank you. Wouldn't we, now, you heard those big numbers, wouldn't we earn even more if we sell it instead of leasing?
Yeah, but we've already voted on that.
So...
So, the offers, the offers to sell it outright, no, this is, because this whole process was done two years ago.
Yes.
And the state made us wait for a very long time.
Mm-hmm.
The offers that came in to sell outright were much lower. If you were going to sell on day one, the highest offer that you got was from one of the competitors, which was not selected by the state, which was North Point, which offered $10 million, and then offered $1 million, basically, a year for 12 years.
And part of what I mean, 5.6 million.
5.6 million, they later tried to change their offer, but it still didn't top out, I believe, above $12 million.
Up to $12 million, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, the analysis that we've done, both the original reports with Johnson Consulting, and then when we had convergence strategies do this, the, and I don't want to overstep my bounds here. I'm your legal advisor, I'm not your policy advisor. What those reports have reflected is that this generates the most revenue for the city. So, you can take that for what you will.
Thank you so much. I thought you would enjoy those questions.
I'm sorry, which motion are we?
So, I don't, I don't know if we actually got a motion on...
No, because I interjected a question.
I'll make a motion. Alderman Hayes, second.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Turner. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Did we read that motion actually out loud?
I'm not sure, there was so much going on.
Yes.
That was a motion to approve the extended hours for the casino. The casino would normally be required to comply with our normal hours of operation, which is no operation between 11:00 and 6:00 a.m. Casinos tend to keep later hours, so they've asked to operate 24 hours a day, which was something that was always contemplated, and so, that's what we just voted on.
Item C, who wanted to pull that one out for discussion?
This was the living room.
Yeah, this is the living room.
Yeah, that was me.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. We talked about this in our briefings, and I just wanted to get some clarity on what this facility is, what it will do, what its processes are. You know, I have what I believe to be an understanding, but I know that we have two ladies here. One is the executive director for the Independence Center, and the other is from the State's Attorney's Office. I'd ask if maybe Lisa Johnson and, ma'am, my friend Sandra, if you could come up and kind of talk to us about the living room, and describe its operations and what you're seeking to do.
The living room is a crisis center, so it's meant to help people who are experiencing mental health crisis. So, it's open right now from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So, it's open right now from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and it's free for any Illinois resident who has a crisis, which if you lose all your money at the slot machine, that might be a crisis. And so, our goal is to help, um, people who are experiencing crisis, and to also help the police have a place to take people who would otherwise maybe be taken to a jail because they're having a mental health crisis, to the right place. So, what else would you like to know about what we do?
Wouldn't that, wouldn't they take them to the hospital if they needed that?
Well, a lot of people who are experiencing mental health crisis don't meet the need for a hospital. So, to be hospitalized for a mental health crisis, you have to be either a danger to someone else, or a danger to yourself. But you can still experience a crisis without wanting to hurt someone or hurt yourself.
Right, right.
So, that's who we're aiming to help. And if they did come to us and they got to that level, we'd take them to the hospital ourselves.
So, what happens if they come to you and, and you're doing like an intake assessment, and you determine that, well, we don't, you don't really need our services or additional services? What, what happens then?
Well, if they came to us, they probably do need some services, and we try to hook up people to the right service. So, we have no wrong door, so if a person comes to us and it's not our specialty, like say it's domestic violence, we would hook them up to the right place. And that's one of the things that we specialize in, is that we work, and we've been in our, in the city for over 33 years. So, the people that we hire are trained in the resources of Lake County and Waukegan.
Thank you. Sandra, can you describe what the connection is to Lake County State's Attorney's Office?
Certainly. So, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, Independence Center has been in our community for over 30 years, and we've been blessed, and it's like a diamond that many of us weren't aware of. The city, excuse me, the county was looking to have something, a crisis stabilization unit, and discovered that the living room was already doing part of what was trying to be brought to the community. And so, Independence Center, the Sheriff's Department, and the State's Attorney's Office are working cooperatively to add a police deflection portion to what they were already running. And so now, in our, because both emergency rooms and jails are often overutilized with individuals, well, really, they need mental health support. So now, if a person commits a low-level offense in our community, it has to be something where ordinarily law enforcement would issue a misdemeanor citation. The police officer has the discretion, they're not mandated, but they will have the opportunity to offer the living room as an, instead of giving them a misdemeanor charge. So you have the individual actually getting their mental health issues addressed, as opposed to sitting in the jail and escalating and not getting any type of services.
Right, thank you very much, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, thank you, I, I think I heard part of it when the sound is, really doesn't project on this side of the building. But you're in collaboration with the Health Department?
Yes, actually, I'm on the Lake County Crisis Coalition, so yes. And I work with Sam Johnson, who's one of the directors over at the Lake County Health Department. And we also work with their, they have a, a team of people who go out into the community for crisis as well.
Is this the same as 2-1-1?
This will be part of 2-1-1.
So I heard you say, once you're completing, completing the assessment and intake, you will find placement for the individual, you work in collaboration with PADS also?
Yes, we do.
So, any, any social service agency that's in Lake County, we're going to be working collaboratively, collaboratively with them, depending on the needs of the individual and what the nature of their crisis is.
And how did you indicate what, if you get stuck and there's all the placements, you know, places are full, how do you strategize then?
Well, one thing is that we also do other services, not in that program. So we actually have therapy in our other location, and we also have housing, we also have vocational services, and we also have psycho-social rehab services as well. So we actually try to get people to come to our program as well. And so, um, we'll look for a lot of different areas where we can exhaust-
So I've done intakes and assessment, what if they're homeless? And I know PADS plays some of these hotels, and that has not been a good strategy. So, what happens then?
Well, we do take people to PADS for the reason that PADS actually is the gatekeeper for housing for people who are homeless. So immediately, if a person identifies as being homeless, we need to get them on that consortium list, so that they will be up for the types of housing that they're available for. But we also have a housing program ourself.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the motion?
I just want to thank you for staying, I, I know it's been a long meeting to sit through, and I apologize for that, but we had some questions earlier, and there was nobody here to answer them, so I, I appreciate you staying, and I hope you can go home and go to bed now.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Sandra.
We enjoy serving Waukegan.
Thank you both, you're both amazing women. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I'm not quite sure who made the motion.
Uh, make the motion.
I'm sorry, you're right, we didn't, and let me read it, so, I need a, Alderman Turner, second. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Mozio. And this is a motion to adopt a resolution approving Independence Center's request for extended operating hours for the living room, 1730 Washington Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on May 2nd, 2022. Now, roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Absolutely, aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Most definitely.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D. Any, what was the discussion, Alderman? Okay.
So, so, um, the, what we did previously, and I just want to line up the motions the same way, would be a motion to postpone consideration of this until June 6th. Okay. So that's, um, that, that's the movement, do you want to, a sec?
Holding this over is not going to affect the payday for our employees, is it?
So, um, perhaps Director Jones could speak to that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it'll just be retro.
I'm sorry, Alderman, what was your question?
My question is, if we hold this line item over, which is the approval of amending the salary ordinance, if we hold it over for two weeks, is that going to affect the payroll for employees?
It doesn't-
Four weeks.
It doesn't necessarily affect the payroll itself, we will still get, the employees covered under the salary ordinance will still get paid. It will, in fact, affect the COLA that's included in here. That can always be retroed. The other option, and of course, I defer back to legal, is making a motion to amend the salary ordinance as proposed to temporarily, I guess, remove the city administrator.
Yeah.
And, um, keeping the chief of staff title as is, and then on June 6th, bringing the salary ordinance back forth with that same ordinance to vote on again, to add it in, should council approve that ordinance.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Well, where's Alderman Kirkwood go? Oh, there he is. Hey, Alderman, is, is that answer your question? I mean, what, what's the purpose in holding it over for?
I would like to do it all together.
Good enough.
Thank you.
There was a motion, we need to-
I need a motion to-
You have a motion?
He made the motion.
It was Kirkwood.
Did anybody make the second to that?
I haven't heard it.
Who made the second?
This is, this is Alderman Kirkwood's motion to postpone consideration of the salary ordinance.
Okay, so Alderman Seager has held it over. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Alderman Mozio.
Oh, yeah, just one point. I know all of us up here have gotten a lot of inquiries about potholes and streets, and I don't know that we maybe have communicated well enough. We are obviously very well aware of that, but we also have a mandate from the state to remove lead pipes from the streets. We have to figure out how we're going to do that first. And once we get that, an idea on that, then we can maybe go forward with a little bit more intensive road program. It doesn't do us any good to go spend a bunch of money on roads and come back a year or two later and tear them out and take the pipes out and redo it. So, we're obviously very well aware of that. And, uh, once we get the water, the lead pipe issue somewhat understood, then I think we will go forward with a little more intensive road program. But that's one of the reasons you didn't see a lot of roads in the capital improvements, because we got to take care of that issue first, so. I just want to make sure people understood that. That's all for tonight, thank you.
We did start potholes today, though. And crews are going around the city, but as we all know, it's a little weather-dependent, but we did start today.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Once again, congratulations to Mr. Wozniak, and certainly Alderman Florian and Rivera, those who helped the, with the Earth Day. It was certainly a success. I think as we go forward with Earth Day, certainly, we need to look at having more dumpsters out, because I know that in the 4th ward, there were individuals who filled up those dumpsters by 11 o'clock. The one that was at Weisfield, as well as the one that was on Julian and Genesee. So we just need to look at that, it's good that the people did utilize that. Also, on June 25th, at the Sheriff's Parking Lot, as the mayor stated earlier, there will be a disposal of electronics, shredding of paper, as well as unused medications. Also, community gardens, there will be a community garden at Corey and Genesee. Those individuals that are in that particular area, you want to volunteer, please do so. Also, with, uh, the NAACP and the African-American Museum are working towards, uh, having more community gardens. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much, Madam, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Well, the weather's warming up, and again, we have, uh, we're beginning to see, what I call the crisis with speeding vehicles. They are running up and down Jackson Street, North Avenue, Sheridan Road, and the Amstutz. You know, the other day, I was out there walking my dog, and it was stunning how many cars were traveling up and down at Amstutz, moving fast and loud. There have been many, several instances. Aside from the complaints I receive, I have actually been on Sheridan Road, or a little further west, closer to North Avenue, standing in someone's yard or on the sidewalk and not able to have a conversation. I had to stop talking because of the loud, uh, cars and motorcycles. And I just want to remind you, and I, I got to say this, because often it's, it's our neighbors, right? People who live right near us, and I'm telling you, in the 6th ward, I have asked, and I will continue to ask the police to do targeted enforcement and, um, and write those tickets. No breaks on those speeding tickets. Also, in the 6th ward, again, we're seeing, uh, a plethora of our neighbors who take their trash cans and put them out to the curb too early, two days, three days early. They leave them out two days, three days, four days, five days. Sometimes they never take them in. I have, uh, been in communication with the building commissioner and the co-compliance supervisor, and I've specifically asked them to, uh, pass down to the co-compliance officers to, uh, write notices of violation and citations for repeat offenders in the 6th ward. I just don't get it. It's really annoying. You know, everybody on the block takes their garbage can in, but one person or two people who never take it in. And I'll tell you what I do, a lot of times I'm very hands-on, I'm proactive, right? So I'm out there, and I'm, I'm traveling around 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, or 6:00 or something, whatever. I see a can, I'll get out, take the can, and move it into their driveway, blocking it so that they have to get out of their car and move the can in where to get their car in. And they, and I've done it, one guy did it like seven times, and they just don't get it. So I've asked the, the building commissioner and the co-compliance department to, to step up their enforcement on, on the trash cans. Another thing with the trash cans, and we see it every year, especially after the snow melts, people overfill their trash cans, they don't use trash bags, the black, the plastic bags, right? You just put trash in there, they overfill it, the lid doesn't close, then the wind blows it, or the raccoons are coming and drag it out. So, again, you know, we have to be responsible for our own environment. I remind everyone, you know, we bought our homes in these nice neighborhoods because they're nice homes in these nice neighborhoods, and that's what we want to maintain, right? So, please make that effort. I want to mention and congratulate my alderman and mentor, friend and mentor Larry Tempest on his 87th birthday last Thursday. I sat, uh, sat with him for quite a while, always enjoy our conversations, and just appreciate Alderman Tempest. And as I said, he's always my alderman. We've talked about this several times, I've mentioned it often. I'm, I'm happy to hear other aldermen are beginning to talk about it, and that is these shootings, shots, fire calls, every day, right? Every single day, uh, we get a significant incident report twice a day, and those are summaries of reports, they're not the actual detail that would go in the court, it's just a summary, high level, right? Some days we get one shots, fire calls, some days it's four, six, eight, and they're all over town. So it's not just the 6th ward. We've talked about this before, and, and I said it, you know, the policing is reactive, and the police are working, they work up investigations, investigations take time, it requires evidence, it requires witnesses and other techniques. So, I want to encourage folk, again, if you see something, say something. If you're aware of someone who has an illegal firearm, if you're aware of someone who's shooting at an illegal firearm, I'm offering reward, cash money on the barrelhead, if you're a good witness, and you are able to effect an arrest and stand as witness in court and get a conviction, I'll pay you out of my pocket. That's what I got for the 6th ward, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I would like to offer my condolences to all the families who have lost a loved one. I want to thank everyone who participated in audience time, it was a very, very lively discussion, or really, one-way discussion. Um, I'm, I'm really disappointed on how the council is divided on this administrative position. Stating that it's an expensive position, it is an expensive position, but we do have the money. It's not like we have to, you know, either raise taxes or stretch any of our other services to obtain this position. So it's, um, it, it, really, it's, it's confusing and it is disappointing to me. But it's the future of our community, and again, it's, it, it's, it's right there for us to, to pull the trigger, make it happen, and, and I just, I don't see what the barriers are. So, so again, I'm very disappointed. Thank you to everybody who participated and worked in Earth Week. And on a very personal note, I would like to congratulate my grandson and his better half, Elias and Emily, with their first child born this morning at 6:00 in the morning. Camille Nicole, seven pounds, nine ounces. And that's all I had, thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations, great-grandpa?
Great-grandpa.
Whoa. Okay, um, I just want to, um, uh, let the police department know, I'm thinking of them in lieu of the incident that happened yesterday. I know this has got to be a difficult time for all of you, and please convey that to- your colleagues for me. Earth Week was a tremendous success. I thank all the Aldermen up here for participating with the dumpsters. Alderman Rivera and I spent an hour out on the Amstutz Saturday morning and then an hour at the beach and then an hour at the harbor. Yeah. And I'll tell you, picking up trash for three hours is hard work. I am on my feet all day, but that is hard work. So anyone who does that regularly, God bless you. Thank you for doing it. We found a lot of interesting stuff. So if you want to take me aside, I can tell you about some of it. But it was a tremendous success. I really appreciate everyone participating. I wanted to, he's not in here right now, but Mr. Saden put a great article in the New Sun that also got picked up in the Tribune. So we got some great press out of this, which was awesome to see our city highlighted for something so positive. I wanted to specifically thank the Burdette family. They cleaned up a good portion of the sixth ward themselves and picked up, I think, 10 or 15 bags of trash. So I really appreciate that. And hopefully we can make this kind of an annual event and do it again next year. As Alderman Rivera said, I am also disappointed we could not move this city administrator position forward. I don't think there's any time better than now to do this. As Alderman Hayes pointed out, you know, nobody complained about all the other 30-some positions we're hiring. And I'm sure they total up a lot more than $250,000. I'm sure of it. I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but I'm sure Ms. Jones could tell us it's not $250,000. I think that's two cops. And I think you said we're hiring 12?
Yeah.
So, so it's way more than $250,000. And nobody's saying a word about that. I don't get it. And, and all these people that are so upset that are, they didn't even come to the budget hearing. We didn't have a single person here, I don't think, that day, did we? And that's when we, we, you know, you can come to the committee meetings and ask us questions and get an answer at the committee meetings. I know we don't do that here at council, but at committee meetings, you can get an answer. There wasn't a single person here to ask about why are we doing a city manager?
That guy at the fruit market didn't tell them to.
No.
That's what happened.
You know, so anyway, I, it's late. I'm not going to go on and on. But thank you, everyone who stayed with us and endured until whatever time it is after 10 o'clock and all of you that participated in audience time. It's awesome to see people who are passionate about the city come and participate and encourage us to do the right thing. I thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple of quick points because it's late. First of all, I've had a number of residents reach out about speeding in particular along Keller and along Dilger. It's getting really bad. I went over there. I was walking a couple of blocks with my two kids on Sunday afternoon, trying to just meet some individuals from the ward, and we witnessed it firsthand, trying to cross the street, people ripping down those streets. So it is a real, real problem throughout the city. We see it every day. I'd encourage the police to, you know, target enforcement, kind of like Alderman Turner had said. So the residents that reached out from those particular blocks, I hear you. I've been out there and I've talked to the police about it, so we're going to do as much as we can. And environmental issues have been raised recently and trying to create a discussion around some of the environmental issues that the city is facing. The best advice I can give right now is to encourage all individuals who are concerned about it, myself included, to come to the committee meetings, as Alderman Florian said, and ask questions. Ask the hard questions. Give us, you know, give us some homework. That's what we're here for. So come to the committee meetings. Come to planning and zoning. If you don't like a conditional use permit, come and voice your concern. If you don't think environmental considerations are being taken into account when a permit's being issued or a new business is coming to the city, raise the issue. But that's, that's the opportunity to do so. I'll continue to work with anybody who wants to see a change on that front. I certainly have an open mind and we'll do everything we can. Other than that, I think we'll leave it there. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes. Want to thank my constituents for all their support and compliments, but you know, the, I think most of all, Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Seager for collaborating with me with the first ward in having their meeting at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was a success. And I had quite a few people that did sign in. Now, in reference to my constituents, not all of them being here, I do get calls all the time, especially from my senior citizens concerning the issues on the agenda. So I want to thank you for that concern and I really want to make that be known. And, you know, my last, last meeting, I meant to thank also my constituents for supporting the cleanup. That's why I had to request two dumpsters and we all collaborated together and they were very supportive because, you know, they're always putting out mattresses and furniture out there on Adams and it's a mess. So they're really, the ward is getting better. And then I want to acknowledge Waukegan Park District, Boys and Girls Club for they're doing the expansion and so they will be better serving in our community, our youth and our adults. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody tonight for being with us. And the council chambers were just about full. I like to see it full every council meeting we have. It's great to have you here. Without you, we don't have, you know, we don't, we can't be out there every day, you know. I make my rounds in my ward three, four times a day. These potholes are a real problem in the second ward. And hopefully asphalt companies will be opening up and our crews will get to work. Chris is doing a great job, code enforcement, everybody. I mean, it's, it's an all full-time job. I mean, these roads are shot and we've got to get them fixed. Thank you. God bless you. Have a safe evening. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot to mention one thing. The Waukegan Park District Park Community Days, beautify Bowen Park. On Saturday, May 7th, next Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00, we will be gathering at Bowen Park. We will be mulching, painting, and planting flowers. So I'm, you don't have to be from the seventh ward. This is a beautiful park in Waukegan. Our park district is stellar, but just another opportunity for you to be hands-on. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have one thing too I forgot to ask. Alderman Turner, I know the garbage can is your passion and I totally get that, but I went on vacation recently and I was very concerned I was going to get a sticker on my door because I was gone for a couple of days over garbage day. What do you do in a situation like that?
Leave your garbage can back by your house.
Just up by the door and that'll be okay? So my neighbor can bring it to the garage door and-
Ask your neighbor to bring it out and back if you need to, or if you put your garbage in garbage, I use black garbage bags, put it in there, close the lid, leave it till you get back.
Okay. I just wanted to find out what the rule was. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something too? No, never mind. Never mind.
Guys, it's after, it's after 10. Let's call it a night, okay? Our attorney would like to say something.
I just need to make one point, and I'm very sorry, I'm not trying to me too this. The, during public comment, there was a public comment made about the very tragic incident that happened involving an off-duty officer, which is being investigated by the Illinois State Police. A member of the public identified an officer by name. That officer was not involved. That was a complete misidentification. The ISP is investigating. We will disclose information as we can, but I would ask the public, in all cases like this, these situations are difficult enough as they are to not spread unverified rumors, to not make wild guesses or conjectures. These are people's lives involved. So, thank you.
Again, thank you for that comment because it's absolutely true. Please, when you come up here and make public comments, understand that you don't want to make wrong comments and that tonight was not, not good for everyone. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman, wow. Now I get a ton of hands. Alderman Kirkwood, who was the second? Alderman Turner? All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night.